Good evening. We will call this City Commission meeting on October 23rd, 2025 to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Grunder.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Bloodsworth.
Here.
Commissioner Howell.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
All right, we will have our indication tonight, invocation tonight, excuse me, by Pastor Todd Hurley with the United Methodist Church.
Thank you for the opportunity to come here. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts for the opportunity to serve this community. We ask for your wisdom to guide our thoughts, your strength to support our decisions, and your grace to foster unity among us. Help us to listen with open minds, speak with integrity, and act with compassion. May we be mindful of those whose voices are often unheard, and may our work reflect a deep commitment to justice, peace, and the common good. Bless this meeting, each person present, and the city we are entrusted to lead. May your presence dwell among us, and your will be done. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll be looking for an approval of the agenda, but we must, we must amend it and take out new business items two, three, and four.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the exceptions of two, three, and four from new business.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Approval of consent agenda minutes of the October 9th, 2025 Commission meeting.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda from October 9th.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. A special presentation tonight, the presentation of the High Springs Hero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our next to last High Springs Hero Awards that we're going to be doing this year. And tonight, we are recognizing employees at our own school here, High Springs Community School. We've got four teachers and the head custodian that all served our country, and interestingly enough, all in different branches of the military. So, Mr. Billy McMahon served in the Navy, and he's currently a civics teacher. And I know Mayor Grunder said that he was amazing for his kids, and I've heard incredible things about him. I remember when I talked to the Boy Scouts one time, a couple of years ago, and their faces just lit up when they were talking about Mr. McMahon and the Constitution, and they all had a favorite amendment. It was, it was incredible. Mr. John O'Hern was in the U.S. Army, and he serves as a head custodian. So that's a job and a half for a school as big as High Springs Community School. Mr. Phil Riley served in the U.S. Coast Guard. He's an eighth grade math teacher. I know him personally. He taught all three of my kids math at Oakview down in Newberry. And with two of my kids in their professional careers now, they still maintain, even post-secondary education, that he was the best math teacher they ever had. Truly just an amazing teacher. And Mr. Matt Thomas was with the U.S. Air Force, and he serves as a long-term sub. He's a floater, and he fills in the gaps every day. And the ladies in the front office said that they would never be able to keep a float without him there. And Mr. Marshall Willie was in the United States Marines, and he's also a middle school math teacher. So anybody who's had middle schoolers know it's a hard age. So these guys that are in the trenches, we really appreciate them very much. So I will be giving, I don't think any of them are here. I will be giving them, I will bring all of their certificates to the school on Monday. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to have one more next week at the next meeting, and then we'll be finished.
Absolutely. I can, I can tell you that Mr. McMahon is probably hands down the best civics teacher in Florida, if not the nation. I can tell you that. He is amazing, and I know all the teachers on there are too as well. But I have personal experiences with him where he is just fantastic with the kids. Moving on to unfinished business.
Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number 2025-06, an ordinance amending Chapter 10 alcoholic beverages of the High Springs Code of Ordinances, providing for restrictions on 500-foot requirements related to churches to apply to church-owned property, only to church-owned property, excuse me, providing for waiver of such requirement upon application with waivers from affected churches, providing for separability, providing for an effective date, and providing for codification. Mr. Mayor, this is second read. There were no changes between first read and second read. On the dais tonight as well, and while related but unrelated to your motion, is the waiver that we talked about at the last meeting. I'd point out to you all that it contains language regarding the binding effect that it will have on the church. And on that second page, there is an affirmation of the person signing that they have the authority to sign and bind that church. And I know we talked about witnesses and a notary, so I went ahead and did both. So it requires two witnesses and a notary.
Thank you.
Now, I just have one question. So say it's a restaurant now, but then a new restaurant comes, and the church doesn't like the new owner, so they want to take back this waiver because they don't like the new restaurant that's in there.
Well, it's going to be specific to the restaurant. It's not going to be, it's not going to, it doesn't run with the land for purposes of the restaurant owner. So there's no, there's no running with the, it's privety of, privety of contract. So it's the parties that enter into the contract. The church is acknowledging that it's going to be binding because we acknowledge the fact that sometimes, you know, congregations change. Whoever's leading the congregation changes, and we don't want it to be an act, an issue of property rights when a new person comes in and says, well, I actually don't like this. And this, we've already granted this restaurant, this ability to serve alcohol. So it would be a different, it would be a different restaurant that would have to apply for, you know, their own licensing and whatnot. So it would be entirely separate. So it will not carry over to the new restaurant owner.
So from the church side, if they get a new pastor, and the new pastor doesn't like what the old pastor did, could he change it?
No, that's what this says, is that the church is bound. And that just comes down to us depriving folks of their property rights after we've granted them a certain right.
Any other Commissioner comments or questions?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-06.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any citizen comments? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Bloodsworth.
Yes.
Commissioner Howell.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
We will move on to citizen requests and comments for issues not on the agenda. Please state your name for the record and limit comments to five minutes.
Julie Tapia-Roronoa, member of the Planning Board currently. Before I get to that, I'd like to have the Commission give a rationale as to why we've removed two, three, and four, if it's simply scheduling or something, but we'd like to know why those three issues were moved off from the agenda. Then for going forward with our land use and development code reorganization and rewriting, I'd like to know what kind of input the Planning Board will have, what kind of influence the Commission may have, if there will be workshops, maybe three or four workshops through the year. The issues we'd like to see addressed are zoning, of course, plating, business lighting or street lighting. We might want to address annexation. We might want to make some setback lines for different buffers or, or if we want to include sidewalks. We want to address all these issues in, as we rewrite our planning and development codes. The parks, the schools, the resources all need to be addressed. Are there different types and tiers of impact fees that we can change in this document? And how much influence will the Planning Board have or workshops needed? Thank you.
I'm Tom Hewlett, resident of High Springs. This will be short. Please consider coming to the High Springs Playhouse to see the presentation. Wait until dark, all of you. Get your tickets and don't wait until dark.
I'm Linda Hewlett. I live with that guy. So, so I'm here to tell you about the Great Pumpkin Decorating Contest. So bring your hand-painted or decorated pumpkins. This work that we do is to support children at elementary and middle schools. And we would appreciate your support. This is grown, this is our sixth year, and we are very pleased that besides having our own upstairs girls there and our police and our firemen and our park and rec, we have now invited, reached out to Alachua, where the Alachua Police Chief and the brand-new fire station, they have agreed to come. And their mayor is going to, promises to bring a pumpkin. And so we're hoping that you guys come between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. You should have a flyer there. And you're very welcome to come. And you will see pumpkins from our businesses and from our personnel and from children and adults. And our businesses are being very participatory, and many of them, about eight or nine of them, are going to be giving out candy along the street, which will be under the supervision of our police chief. So we hope you could all come, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioner Samsu Weller, a resident of High Springs. Back in 2011, when I was on the Commission at that time, we had requested the administration to put on our website a, basically a copy or a picture of the city's checkbook. It was on the website for many years, and sometime, you know, maybe three or four years ago, it disappeared. And so I'm here to request that that be put back on the website. It was a monthly picture, if you will, of, and it had the check number, the vendor name, the date, and the amount as a way of transparency for our citizens to see what type of purchases the city is making. It did not have salary information, that type of thing, but it is when checks are issued for some type of purchase for the city. So I would request that that, you look into that and have that on our website again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeffrey Winter, Cornerstone Community Partners. It's an honor to appear before you all this evening. My firm submitted a response, proposal response to the RFP for CDBG grant administration services. We have followed through with the agenda item. I know that item was pulled. We did submit our proposal for a cost of $46,000 on our fee, leaving $10,000 on the table for the city to cover costs associated with single audits and administrative expenses. And of course, in the event those funds aren't utilized for the administrative costs, they can be transferred over for construction costs. When we were advised this item had been pulled off of the agenda tonight, we submitted a notice of, notice of protest. And I'd like to read it into the record so that way council is, or Commission rather, is aware of the filing we've submitted. States, "Good morning, Ms. Stone. It was a pleasure meeting with you and city staff earlier this month for the proposal response opening. We sincerely appreciate the opportunity to participate within this procurement process, and we recognize the Evaluation Committee's thorough objective review of the submitted proposals as indicated in the initial ranking sheets included within the City Commission Agenda Packet. We plan on being in attendance this evening to address the City Commission prior to their consideration of a contract award. As a courtesy to you and city staff, please accept this email as advance notice of Cornerstone's intent to submit a formal written protest as indicated within the attached notice of protest. A copy of the notice of protest has also been submitted to the city via certified mail, and we will hand-deliver a copy this evening, which we have submitted as well. Please note, it's our belief that the current proposed course of action, as indicated within the current Commission Agenda Item Request Form, will result in the rejection of the professional services procurement package by Florida Commerce and impose substantial delays to the city's CDBG project as it conducts a subsequent CDBG compliant procurement process. Should be noted that non-compliant, non-compliant procurement will result in the disallowance of CDBG funds for all CDBG grant administration services. And we would be remiss not to promptly bring this to your attention as this is, this is, this result is contrary to our stated commitment to minimize all out-of-pocket expenses to the city. As we indicated within our proposal to High Springs, Cornerstone embeds regulatory compliance into every step of the process, preventing issues like these rather than reacting to them after the fact. This proactive stance protects High Springs from costly delays due to compliance lapses. We pair this proactive with proactive communication so city officials are never in the dark and issues are addressed before they become problems. With Cornerstone, High Springs gains peace of mind knowing that every grant dollar is safeguarded and every requirement met. A low-risk partnership where we shoulder the administrative burdens and shield the city from pitfalls. It's our hope that these proactive discussions will allow the city the opportunity to address these issues early in the process before any actions are taken to jeopardize the city's CDBG compliance. We look forward to working with you and city staff to resolve this matter as efficiently as possible to avoid incurring substantial delays to this project. I'd like to, at this point, recognize city staff's decision to pull those items off of the agenda. I know it was a difficult decision to make, as you all have been looking forward to getting this project moving. I highly recommend that city move forward with speaking with Florida Commerce to ensure that before the city council, the Commission makes, takes any action on this that could jeopardize your compliance, you have that conversation on the front end to ensure all of those items are addressed. Appreciate your time. Thank you so much."
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming.
David Lynch, L-I-N-C-H. I am a citizen of High Springs. I beg the city manager and the Commissioner not to pave over our beautiful, historic, and unique concrete streets, the streets that I walked on as a child. High Springs Brewing, does the city manager and the commissioners want the name of their city associated with a product that kills 7,000 people each day?
Thank you, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name's Melissa Fox, and our company also submitted a proposal for grant administration services. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. I know that the previous speaker was kind of, you're not in jeopardy of losing this grant. Had you submitted this, had you gone through and awarded and submitted it, yes, Florida Commerce would have issued a finding and would have recommended that you go back. They would not have approved it. They would have made you go back and go through the steps that you're already taking. So you were not in jeopardy. I just wanted to clarify that you're not in jeopardy of losing the grant. And because Florida Commerce does not allow proposed or, you know, like, grant administrators to come in and help you with this process because it would be a conflict of interest, you're kind of left to your own, you know, you're having to walk yourself through this with Florida Commerce's help, but sometimes you don't always get the clear directions that you need. So I just kind of wanted to clarify that, that, you know, this would have never been approved, and you would not have been in jeopardy of losing the actual grant. You just would have had to go back and do the steps that you're already taking. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Staff. Brian Bisher, High Springs, and just an update again on the TARA developments in the city of Alachua that are poised to impact the city of High Springs and our drinking water. And there is a Planning and Zoning Board hearing on November the 18th for the TARA April portion of that project, which is a special exception permit for what's considered to be a minor stormwater utility. However, it's a number of acres of stormwater utility that's directly west of the creek, of Mill Creek. And also, it is a piecemeal portion that would support community commercial development on the west side of the creek, which is in their future land use map. I bring this to your attention because the city of Alachua has requested that affected parties continue to restate their affected party status whenever they have an issue that's brought forward related to TARA. So you can't just put an affected party status related to TARA developments in general, but they apparently want that to be stated for every single meeting, which means it would be important to weigh in. The county's weighing in. The county's going to be there with some experts for testimony. I believe they may also have legal there as well. The National Spelangeological Society has just found out about this. They own the property immediately to the west and south of the TARA developments. And so they are working with council now to see what their approach is going to be. So just bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any responses to any questions or comments?
I can answer the question about the LDC and the Plan, and Plan Board's involvement. Ultimately, you'll be amending your LDC and as such, I mean, you think about when we do minor amendments, it always goes to Plan Board first for their recommendation, and then it comes to you all. So that'll be the same process here. So in, in terms of the legal order of operations, Plan Board is your first stop on getting anything to you guys. And as per usual, they can make their recommended approval, recommended approval with changes, you know, recommended. You don't adopt the ordinance, so that will be Plan Board's direct involvement. As to like, as to whether or not KCT is going to have workshops, I can't speak to that. But I wanted to, to give you all the peace of mind, knowing that everything will go before Plan Board first.
Thank you. I believe they did talk about, there was something in that for workshops throughout the city that they had already had in there.
They'll have workshops.
Yeah. There's a couple of them set up and whatnot. Do we need to do anything with that affected party?
That's up to you guys. If you would like to re-declare, I have no involvement in TARA whatsoever, so I'm hearing it for the first time as well. So if you all would like to declare, to declare your affected party status, as a reminder, legal argument is not competent and substantial evidence, so there wouldn't be a scenario in which I was there arguing. I know that that's been brought up as a concern. So you would be sending Plan, staff, your city manager, perhaps one of you all, to testify about how it would affect you. But it wouldn't be me because my thoughts and legal feelings are not admissible for purposes of that Commission.
I definitely want to stay on top of that one. That, that one is a big one that, that will absolutely affect us for years and years to come. So I would like to, if the rest of the Commission agrees, continue our affected party status.
Mr. Mayor, if I might ask a question of Danielle.
Sure.
I've been going to some of those meetings. I see Brian there. I don't ever speak on behalf of the Commission. And I wanted to, I, I think we should keep that, you know, I mean,
Sure.
competent legal, whatever, but, you know, I'm a, I'm a resident of High Springs when I'm there. But I still try to not speak just because I don't want to get crosswise.
Sure.
So there's no conflict for me attending those, right?
No, there's no conflict for purposes of attending. The only time that something like that becomes a problem is if more than one of you attend and,
Right.
you know, you sit together and you start to have conversations, you know, we talk about all the time that looks of impropriety are sometimes enough. So no, there's no issue with you attending, and there's really no issue with you speaking either, as long as you continue to make clear that you're speaking as Catherine White's the citizen.
Right. Okay, thank you.
How about addressing
How about addressing why we did take the three off of the agenda since, you know, there's protest here? What is that all about?
So the way we did the ranking sheets, we were new to it. It was myself and Angela, I think it was Ashley Molden. We made a mistake. We didn't rank them the right way. We, so with that, as you heard, there's a protest. So to pull it off, I talked to the attorney. We're going to pull it off. We're going to go back and re-rank them. That will be in compliance with the state Florida Commerce and re-present them at the next meeting.
But Mr. Marshall, if I could just confirm, we don't need to throw away the submittals? It's just the ranking sheet. That way you don't have to re-copy everything. We can keep what we have and just bring it to the next.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Okay. Moving on to new business item one. Discuss, consider, and act on FDLE Florida Department of Law Enforcement Burn Justice Assistance Grant. The burn grant.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, Antoine Shepherd, Chief of Police, High Springs Police Department. The High Springs Police Department has been awarded $24,000 through the 25, 26. This is the countywide Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. It's commonly known as the burn grant that we participate in every year. This is a competitive grant process that was administered locally through Alachua County, and it's funded by the U.S. Department of Justice. The mayor, like they do every year, placed me as the proxy representing the city of High Springs during the countywide allocations process. And as a result of that representation, High Springs demonstrated a need, and we secured the largest funding amount compared to all of the other municipalities, including all of the other law enforcement agencies throughout that process. So the burn grant is supposed to support to enhance public safety, technology, equipment, and community-based policing efforts. So the award, with the award that we have been funded this year, we're going to purchase a new Harley-Davidson police motorcycle. This is a, this new unit will replace an aging motorcycle that's 15 years old, that's expired out of its services. So and by doing this from operational perspective, it's going to improve traffic enforcement. It'll provide enhanced capability for special events, parades, funerals, dignitary escorts, expand our community policing through outreach initiatives, increase officer safety, reliability, and operational efficiency. So demonstrates our department's commitment to pursuing cost-effective grant funding resources that reduce our financial impact on the city's general fund. We also have a couple of other grants that we've been awarded. We'll bring that to your attention. I talked about a residual grant, which was very time-sensitive. Sometimes you just get those calls. We got the call from FDLE saying, hey, we have funding left over from the previous budget. We pushed in for a certain amount of money. We've been rewarded $65,000 in that grant. That grant's going to go to replace several of our old radios. And then, of course, we have one that's an RFQ. That's $100,000 that is forthcoming as well. That's in the process. So I'll take any questions or any comments.
Good job, chief.
Thank you.
So chief, with that $24,000, is that going to fully pay for the motorcycle? Or we got to add money to that?
Just a couple thousand that's going to come from Red Speed. All these grants that we acquire, they are 100%. We don't do no match grants. All our grants are pretty much.
And then what's the plans for the older bike? Are we going to salvage that, sell it? What's the plan?
The plan may be to keep that as a training bike. A lot of agencies keep them. When we, you'd be amazed of the wear and tear that goes on the bikes when they, when they ride them. When we take them, when we take those new bikes, we have to do repairs afterwards. So it'd be probably sitting there as a training, a training bicycle. So when those officers go to that 40, 80-hour course and they are just really running those bikes hard, it would better be suited for that.
So with that being said, if we keep both of them, what kind of a cost is that going to bring to the city for maintenance for both of them now? Is that going to add more to our expenses?
I don't think it would add much with the third bike there because we already have money for the second bike. So if it becomes where there's a cost-effective issue on the third bike, we would just sell it.
Oh, so we're going to have, end up having three bikes?
Correct. We're either having three bikes or we'll end up getting rid of the third bike. We haven't made that decision. But currently, we have two bikes and we're replacing the one.
And one's 15 years old and how old is the other one?
Probably about two years. We got that one on a grant as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just don't want to keep, we're trying to look into cutting expenses here. I don't want to just keep adding just because we're getting a grant, but we still got to maintain it and have people trained, pay for all that.
Yes, sir. Yeah, all our grants, what we try to do from, from my perspective, we try to, a cost-saving measure where we're replacing and not adding on. So you got a 15-year-old bike that eventually needs to be replaced, and we found how to replace that.
And is it necessity that we keep a bike in our small town?
I think so, absolutely. I think so. It helps us with our escorts. It helps us with enforcement of traffic and those natures.
Okay, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so you don't anticipate O&M costs to change at all?
No.
Because like Commissioner Bluesworth said, we're, this, this is not replacing a patrol car. Is it going to be something that's used by an officer on their routine shift?
Yes, yes. These bikes, right, right now, we get requests. A lot of times, we only have single use of one bike because the other bike is kind of, you know, at its expiration. And so we, you know, we can't sometimes participate in different things or do different things. Usually, you see two bikes that are dual in operations.
Mm-hmm. So we're still going to have to ensure a third motorcycle if we keep the old one?
If we keep one. We haven't decided on making that, that decision.
Because I mean, it seems like we are kind of adding to our nut if we're keeping the third one. And as Commissioner Bluesworth said, you know, we couldn't afford to get a VAC truck for public works.
Absolutely.
How many, how many vehicles do we have? You know, how many officers do we have? How many vehicles do we have? I mean, I know one police, one, one of your motorcycle officers pretty well.
Yes.
Spends every day with my kid. You know, I don't know how much he uses that. Is that what he uses when, during the summertime? That's his patrol vehicle?
What you're talking, I'm sorry, what was the question?
The, the head of the criminal justice program, Dana Newberry, he's, I've seen him on the motorcycle. So when he's working in the summers, that's what he uses?
Yes, sometimes that's what he, he uses it a lot, absolutely.
Sometimes. Does he use something else also?
Yes, patrol cars. We, our primary source is patrol vehicles that we drive.
Okay, so what you're saying to me then is on one of our reserve officers, who I hold in the highest regard, we have two vehicles for that one person who only works part-time.
No, ma'am. We have, we have several motorcycle officers, the motorcycles.
So that gets shared?
That's shared, no.
Okay, okay.
No.
So there's not going to be any needed, any need to additionally train officers to be certified to ride the motorcycles? This is just augmenting?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes. And we, I want to go back to, we also, with our Red Speed money, this is the purpose of that, of that money. It's the purpose of those funding to go to equipment and things of that nature to enhance our ability. And so anything that goes from there, that, that Red Speed money takes care of some of those expenses.
Can it pay for O&M, like insurance, or is it just for the purchase of?
Equipment. It goes for the equipment.
Just the equipment. So it doesn't really take care of keeping it running, just getting it?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, what I, what I'll say is, is something like a motorcycle with a smaller department, it does help with recruiting and retention. It gives officers another, you know, motivation to stay around, and that's, that's a big deal. Especially if we're trying to chain, train and bring new officers in because our experienced ones are leaving, so, yeah.
Yeah, but this is not a big expense. I can, I could tell you that. It's not. It's not something that's going to be impactful on you. I wish I could bring you your insurance information, how that would impact. But I think you're talking about pennies. Yeah.
I think it's great, chief.
Thank you.
I know what, I know we utilize them in Gainesville quite a bit. And, and the reason for having that and plus a vehicle, a car, is because there's not always the weather that you can be on both. And it's not always safe for them to be out there. But when you're doing things like the parades and all the events downtown, and you've got traffic everywhere, having that bike, which can get through and in and into different places so much easier and so much more conveniently, it really ups the response times during your busy times. So having those are critical. And I like the way we pass it around because at GPD, there's a bike and a cop, and a cop car at every, at all the houses that, that have the ability to ride the bikes. So we're doing it the right way out here.
We've probably got four or five officers sharing bikes, so.
And one for a training bike is good because our guys used to wreck bikes nonstop.
Correct. And that's what I'm trying to, I'm really trying to, I'm really trying to pick the bigger, paint the bigger picture for you guys. I know we're looking at the dime, and I look at the dime every day. But you, you have two bikes and then you use that bike, you're using your good bike. You're tearing up your bike.
Yeah, that AR class, you went through it, didn't you? They, I mean, they, that class is tough. They lay bikes down every day.
And the things I'm bringing to you are standard practices. This is what other agency, this is what our counterpart does in Alachua. They have also a training bike that's older.
I don't know, I'm going to entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we accept the burn grant money for the motorcycle.
Second.
Then properly moved and seconded. Do we have any citizen comments? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, moving on to new business item five. Discuss, consider, and act on renewing the Sunrise Consulting Group Services and Performance Agreement.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is your lobbyist, Andrew Khalio out of Sunrise Consulting. This is just their annual contract, continued services with Sunrise Consulting.
Andrew has done a fantastic job for us.
He's done a great job. He really keeps me, I get a lot of updates, at least weekly, about what's going on with legislation. That's how I stay on top of the legislation. And when it comes time for appropriations, as we're going through right now, he's been instrumental in getting us to the finish line. Unfortunately, the governor has vetoed the last two. So talking with Chief Shepherd, we decided not to go for the police appropriations this time because three times of getting vetoes insanity. So we, we put in for that fan press. But he's been working right with us to get the appropriations. He's just, he's a, does a really good job as our lobbyist.
Mr. Mayor, if I could also, the fact that the governor vetoed what we asked for really has nothing to do with what Andrew's doing. I think he's doing everything he can. He knows everybody everywhere.
He does a lot more than just, so part of his job is to help us get these appropriations and grants, but he does a lot more. So when we have an issue with, example, the CRA legislation that was going through la- last cycle, he gets us in front of the people we need to so they understand our stance and how much we want to protect our CRA, just for an example. So he does a lot in legislation and advocating for us. Getting us some money is just a third of his job.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we accept the contract.
Second.
We're properly moved and seconded. Do we have any citizen comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Moving on to the city attorney report and update.
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, I want to bring to you all's attention, I know that there was a lot of discussion in it during the last legislative session, and ultimately, the bills didn't succeed to eliminate ad valorem taxes. But I am bringing to your attention that the, the House is already starting to put together, they put together a property taxes committee. And on November 1st, they're supposed to put out a report as to how ad valorem taxes, you know, removing them and whatnot would affect communities. So it was a funded mandate, and then it became an unfunded mandate. When it finally went across the governor's desk, he defunded this mandate for this report. But we're supposed to get it on November 1st. This House committee is supposed to receive this report. So I'm bringing to your attention that, when, you know, we're talking about lobbyists, now is the time to really start speaking up about those things. Obviously, nobody enjoys paying property taxes. But, you know, you all are well aware, having just gone through your budget, how important they are in order to make your budget. So there, there are some creative bills out there of different ways to minimize effects to residents of property taxes while not entirely slashing them. But then there are, I believe it's Representative Kevin Steele has introduced HJR 201 that essentially says no property taxes except for the school. The schools can still levy their taxes. However, you're still required to maintain your law enforcement budget from the previous fiscal year. You cannot decrease your allocated budget towards law enforcement, which becomes, you know, a bit of a problem as we saw during our budget season of how do you make up that difference? I don't know High Springs' numbers well enough to be able to tell you whether you'd make it up in commercial and non-homestead. This would be, it's a homestead elimination, I should say. I apologize. I should have said that. So I don't know how much revenue you all derive from your commercial and your rentals, but I would levy to bet that it's probably not sufficient to make up, you know, and, and maintain your law enforcement budget at the budget that it's presently sitting. So I can't encourage you enough to utilize this time to, you know, speak with residents, speak with your lobbyists, speak with your representatives. I know the delegation met, I believe, on Monday of this week. And then I know that committees are in session, or have started coming back into session. I know that there's another, the Florida League of Cities is having a big meeting in the first week of December. So now is the time to really be tuned into that and be paying attention and figuring out how it's going to affect High Springs and how you function as a community. Cheery update.
City manager report and update.
So to follow what Danielle was saying, there is a legislative committee from the Florida League of Cities. They meet, I think it's December 3rd and 4th, if I remember right. And wanted to know if a representative from the commission wanted to attend that. And if some, if you pick a representative to go to that, we'll, we'll set up, getting all the travel and stuff taken care of. You got your city manager's report. The main thing is the 236 wastewater expansion. We've been working with an access issue with the neighboring parcel owner, but we also have a gopher tortoise that we're trying to relocate, and it might be burrowing now. So that's what's kind of holding that up. We hope to have that going here pretty soon. The wastewater treatment plant is the second plant. The new plant's fully operational. They're painting the old plant and did the rehab. That should all, that's all going well in the phase two, the wetlands is going well. The basins are holding water, and the new plants, I drove out, I think it was yesterday, and they're, they're taking in well, well. So it seems to be a successful project so far. Any questions?
No, sir. We'll move on to commissioner comments and concerns.
So I was able to attend some training with the international elected municipal officials organization out of the Florida League of Cities. Part one was two weeks ago, and I'm leaving for tonight for part two. What I could tell you is, the next meeting, I'm gonna, I'll have a better report, but the amount of training and foundation that they, they build in this training was unbelievable. There's 36 commissioners and mayors from around the state of Florida. It was a very small group of people. We were able to be engaged and ask questions. And part of it, it just kind of opened my eyes a little bit where our main focus is High Springs. But there's 411 cities in the state of Florida, and the average population is about 6,400 people. So there's a lot of communities like us. However, every one of us are unique. No matter what's happening, the way they raise money, their wastewater, their water and everything else. It is, but it's a lot of networking, a lot of talking. You know, one of the things that I tried to learn out when I was down there was about grinder pumps because it seems to be like, nobody knows about them very much. But there's some very large communities with grinder pumps, and they're being successful using them. So sitting down with some of these people and kind of figuring out what they're doing is, is a, is a big deal. Because I know that's a huge cost in our budgets to repair and replace those things, so. But I'm excited about part two. The other thing I wanted to touch on was, a couple of weeks ago, Ms. Tapia Ruano brought up SB 180. And that passed in July, and there is a lot, as you mentioned, a lot of municipalities that are going, entering into a lawsuit. And, and one representative, I believe, has entered a fix, I believe is what it's called, or something. Does that sound right? Something. I don't, sure, he entered something.
A fix-it bill, maybe? A fix-it bill?
That sounded right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think there's like, there's, I mean, quite literally like 45 municipalities that have filed suit, and I believe the Third Circuit. I have had discussions with each of you on my own about how I don't think it's constitutional, so.
And that's, so that, that fix had, had been put in, but it doesn't look like it's going to be very supported by a lot of the representatives. So that's, that's going to be an ongoing process. And I believe that the Florida League of Cities is fighting it very well. So I look forward to keeping an eye on that as well. So I look forward to keeping an eye on that as well. And I think that about does it for me.
Mr. Mayor, I want to touch on something that Mr. Tatum had brought up last meeting or time or two about his trash issue. I have talked to Ms. Dana about that and she is addressing that. I have not talked to Mr. Tatum yet about it, but I want to at least make that public knowledge that she was looking into it.
We got a thumbs up.
All right, good deal.
That's a good thing.
I just, real quickly, I wanted to thank Barb and Ken, Ken and Barbie, for the, for the crosses that they made. Thank you to Commissioner Bloodsworth and his wife Kathy and two of our youth council members put those out last night and they looked just amazing. And I think there was 34 of them, I think. And I expect that's only going to grow. They just look beautiful. And I wanted to express my condolences to Ms. Billy Doughty's family. We lost a giant in our community and she changed all of our lives that she touched. So that's all, that's all I've got.
All right. The employee of the week this week is Mr. Sergeant Shank. He would, he handled a very major crisis here in the city and he did very well. So he is our employee of the week. Just to let everybody know, this weekend is pretty busy downtown High Springs. The soda shop official grand opening is this Saturday. Also, the Lions Club Bike Show is this Saturday from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Veterans Day Celebration will be Saturday, November 1st, 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Catherine Taylor Park.
Catherine Taylor Park.
I had a busy week this week. The city manager and I went to the delegation meeting on Monday where we got to speak to them about the items that we're asking them to get us appropriations for. I also had a very unique experience and got to meet personally with the Lieutenant Governor yesterday. And we got to sit down and talk and have some very honest conversations, one of which was about the fact that our police department has been vetoed after appropriation money has gotten in, which he was not happy to hear about. He also said there's probably a reason. So he's going to, he gave me his personal cell phone number and I'm in touch with his staff already, so we're going to figure out exactly what the deal was and if we can't maybe bring that back to life and get that police department built. Because I told him we're in dire need of it. I even showed him a picture of it, to which he shook his head and said, yeah, well, we got to figure something out. So it was nice to have a, sit down with him. He was an extremely personable guy and gave us about an hour and a half for us to just kind of have some open, honest conversations about the, the state and what, and what they're working on now, which was, it was interesting. So he did talk about the, the homestead quite a bit and he said that in their numbers, it's anywhere from 3% to 11% of most cities have homestead exemptions. So I told him, I think High Springs would be higher than that. So we're going to, I'm going to ask if we can get those numbers of what the number of home, or the percentage of homestead. That way I can get that to him personally. That way he can see what, what it absolutely will do to us right away. That way we can talk to somebody who's at least talking to the governor on four or five times a day. But that was my week.
And I'll entertain. Mr. Mayor, I want to touch on, you said there's a legislation in December or a meeting?
It's a, it's a meeting with the Florida, the Florida League of Cities.
I would love to attend that, if that's something you guys wish.
Can more than one go or just one? Just one? Only one? There can only be one go? Yeah.
All right.
Absolutely.